Good evening. We welcome you to our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. That was free. Thank you, our dear heavenly Father, for another opportunity to study your word tonight. We believe you have a lot to teach us as we begin our study of the life of Joseph. Give us listening ears and understanding hearts. Holy Spirit inspire us and give us insight. Teach us and instruct us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, we are going to study Genesis, chapter 37. Genesis, chapter 37, Joseph and His Brothers. I'm going to start by reading the first 11 verses of chapter 37. "Now Jacob dwelt in the land where his father was a stranger, in the land of Canaan." This is the history of Jacob. Joseph, being seventeen years old, was feeding the flock with his brothers. And the lad was with the sons of Bilhar and the sons of Zilpa, his father's wives. And Joseph brought a bad report of them to his father. "Now Israel loved Joseph more than all his children, because he was the son of his old age. Also, he made him a tunic of many colors. But when his brothers saw that their father loved him more than all his brothers, they hated him and could not speak peaceably to him. Now Joseph had a dream, and he told it to his brothers, and they hated him even more. So he said to them, 'Please hear this dream which I have dreamed.' There we were, biding sheaves in the field; then behold, my sheever rose and stood upright, and indeed your sheaves stood all around and bowed down to my sheaf. And his brothers said to him, 'Shall you indeed reign over us? Or shall you indeed have dominion over us?' So hated him even more for his dreams and for his words. Then he dreamed still another dream and told it to his brothers, and said, 'Look, I have dreamed another dream; and this time the sun, the moon, and the eleven stars bowed to me.' So he told it to his father and his brothers. And his father rebuked him and said to him, 'What is this dream that you have dreamed? Shall your mother and I and your brothers indeed come to bow down to the earth before you?' And his brothers envied him; but his father kept the matter in mind." Genesis and His Brothers. The last thing we heard about Jacob in Genesis 35:27 is that he went to Hebron to his father Isaac, who died at the age of one hundred and eighty years, and was buried by him and Esau, his brother. This chapter opens by telling us that he settled in that land, that is, the land of Canaan, where his father had been a stranger. After that information, we are given the history of Jacob's family, and we are introduced to one of the most remarkable men in the Bible, Joseph, the eleventh son of Jacob, born to him in his old age by his most beloved wife, Rachel. Joseph's story is covered in this chapter and chapters 39 to 50, almost a quarter of the book of Genesis. Why do we have such a great emphasis on the study of Joseph? One, Joseph's story reveals how Jacob's descendants came to live in Egypt. In Genesis, chapter 15, 13 to 14, Genesis 15, 13 to 14, God said to Abraham, "Know certainly that your descendants will be strangers in a land that is not theirs." That land was to be Egypt and will serve them for a hundred years. "And also that nation whom they serve I will judge. Afterward they shall come out with great possessions; they will plunder the Egyptians." God was yet to fulfill all these prophecies. For them to be fulfilled, Jacob's descendants will have to be in Egypt. Joseph's story explains how they got to be in Egypt. Joseph's story also set the stage for the Exodus, the mass departure of the children of Israel from the land of Egypt. Three, we have a lot to learn from Joseph's fear of God and loyalty to him and the way God was with him and protected him through his unpleasant experiences. And the fourth reason, we can see how God works through circumstances to bring his plan to pass for his glory. Now to the story. Jacob, also known as Israel, was living with his twelve sons in the land of Canaan. Joseph, the first of the two sons born to him by Rachel, his favorite wife, was seventeen years old at this time. He was standing the flock with his brothers. But we are told that he brought a bad report about them to his father Jacob. And of course, his brothers must have resented him for this. Also, coupled with this was the fact that their father loved Jacob, Joseph, more than all his children and made him a tunic of many colors. Joseph's tunic was long-sleeved, ankle-length, and colorful, and certainly most unsuitable for manual labor. That quote, that tunic was to become the symbol of Jacob's favoritism to Joseph, and it added to the hatred his father's brothers had for him and made him very unpopular within the family. Parental favoritism, that is, when one or both parents display consistent favoritism towards one child over another, is very bad for the family and should be avoided at all cost because it hurts, it hurts the family in several ways. It is surprising that Jacob did not seem to have learnt anything from what happened in his own parents' house and the consequences that favoritism brought, especially to him as a person. Isaac, his father, loved Esau, while Rebecca, his brother, loved him, Jacob. Had he forgotten all the conflict, the treachery and deception that plagued the family as a result? Did he forget that that was what was responsible for his fleeing from home to experience worse things at the hand of Lebanon, his uncle? Jacob's love and favoritism for Joseph tarnished the relationship between him and his brothers. In verses 5 to 11, Joseph had two dreams. The first involved his brother's sheaves of wheat bowing down to his own sheaf. How did he think his brothers would react to this dream when he shared it with them? Obviously, he was young, immature, and naive. His brothers reacted as expected. Verse 8 says, "And his brothers said to him, 'Shall you indeed reign over us? Or shall you indeed have dominion over us? So they hated him even more for his dreams and his words.'" The second dream was even more alarming for it included his father and mother. He said, "This time the sun, the moon, and the eleven stars bowed down to me." This time, not only his brothers were infuriated, even his father rebuked him. Excuse me. "Shall your mother and I and your brothers indeed come to bow down to the earth before you?" His brothers envied him, but his father kept the matter in mind. Jacob himself had experienced God speaking to him in a dream. Could this be God's revelation to Joseph about his future? Time would tell. Indeed, as we know now, the purpose of the dreams was to show Joseph a glimpse of his future. It was not meant to be anything to make him proud or feel superior to his brothers, but as mentioned earlier, Joseph was young, immature, and naive. When you have such dreams, it is for you to keep it in your mind and pray about it. God sometimes speaks through dreams, but not every dream comes from God. The Bible remains the voice of God. After many years, as we shall see, Joseph's dreams were literally fulfilled. Now let's read verses 12 to 28. Genesis 37, 12 to 28. "Then his brother went to feed their father's flock in Shechem. And Israel said to Joseph, 'Are not your brothers feeding the flock in Shechem? Come, and I will send you to them.' So he said to him, 'Here I am.' Then he said to him, 'Please go and see if it is well with your brothers and well with the flocks, and bring back word to me.' So he sent him out of the valley of Hebron, and he went to Shechem. Now a certain man found him, and there he was, wandering in the field. And the man asked him, saying, 'What are you seeking?' So he said, 'I am seeking my brothers; please tell me where they are feeding their flocks.' And the man said, 'They have departed from here; for I heard them say, "Let us go to Dothan.'" So Joseph went after his brothers and found them in Dothan. Now when they saw him afar off, even before he came near them, they conspired against him to kill him. Then they said to one another, 'Look, this dreamer is coming; come therefore, let us kill him and cast him into some pit, and we shall say some wild beast has devoured him; we shall see what will become of his dreams.' But Reuben had it, and he delivered him out of their hands and said, 'Let us not kill him.' And Reuben said to them, 'Shed no blood, but cast him into this pit, which is in the wilderness, and do not lay a hand on him, that he may deliver him out of his hands and bring him back to his father.' So it came to pass when Joseph had come to his brothers, and they stripped Joseph of his tunic, the tunic of many colors that was on him. Then they took him and cast him into a pit, and the pit was empty; there was no water in it; and they sat down to eat a meal. Then they lifted their eyes and looked, and there was a company of Ishmaelites coming from Gilead with their camels, bearing spices, balm, and myrrh on their way to carry them down to Egypt. So Judah said to his brothers, 'What profit is there if we kill our brother and conceal his blood? Come, let us sell him to the Ishmaelites, and let not our hand be upon him; for he is our brother and our flesh.' And his brother listened. Then Midianite traders passed by; so the brothers pulled Joseph up and lifted him out of the pit and sold him to the Ishmaelites for twenty shekels of silver, and they took Joseph to Egypt." Jacob sent Joseph to go and see if it was well with his brothers, who had gone to feed the flock in Shechem, and bring back word to him. Joseph was more or less sent to supervise his brothers, to inspect them and report back to their father. Earlier in verse 2, we have been told that he brought a bad report of them to their father, which must have been one of the reasons they hated him. Joseph did not find his brothers in Shechem, but a man told him they had gone to Dothan. So he made his way to Dothan. When they saw him afar off, they conspired to kill him. Shocking! To kill their own brother. They didn't even think about how Joseph's death would affect their father. "Look, the dreamer is coming; they mocked him. Come therefore, let us now kill him and cast him into some pit, and we shall say some wild beast has devoured him." Why did the brothers want to kill him? They wanted to make sure that his dreams did not come true. "We shall see what will become of his dreams," they said. This was jealousy at its worst. These brothers were willing to kill their kate brother over a tunic of many colors and some reported dreams. We need to beware of jealousy. Excuse me. If jealousy is left unchecked, it quickly grows and leads to more serious sins. See how the brothers' jealousy had grown into bitterness and hatred with a murderous intent. Joseph's dreams were God's messages to his family, and God's word will never fail. No one can stop it from coming true. The brothers thought they could, but how wrong they were. When Reuben had it, he talked them out of their murderous plan. "Let us not kill him," he said. "Shed no blood, but cast him into this pit, which is in the wilderness, and do not lay a hand on him." He had the intention of coming back later for Joseph to take him to his father. He most probably thought that if he was able to rescue Joseph, he might be able to appease his father, whom he had wronged by sleeping with Bilhar, his father's concubine. In Genesis 35:22, Genesis 35:22. But this was compromise on Reuben's part. "Let's not kill him, but let's cast him into the pit." He should have told his brothers that killing Joseph was wrong. He should have stood up to them. After all, he was older than all of them. Let us beware of compromise. When Joseph got to his brothers, they seized him, stripped him of his multicolored tunic, which was a symbol of his special relationship with his father, and they threw him into the pit, mocking him. Then they sat down to eat. They were so callous, so heartless, and Joseph must have been shocked at this show of their hatred and resentment against them. Although this chapter does not recount Joseph's feelings and actions, Genesis 42:21 tells us that he was distressed and pleaded with the brothers for his life, but they did not listen to him. As the brothers were eating, they saw a company of Ishmaelites and Midianite traders coming from Gilead. Suddenly, Judah had an idea. "Why kill Joseph? When we can sell him and make a profit. Listen to what he said. What profit is there if we kill our brother and conceal his blood? Come, and let us sell him to the Ishmaelites, and let not our hand be upon him; for he is our brother and our flesh." The brothers listened to him. At least this would save them the trouble of bearing the guilt of his death. So they sold him into slavery for twenty shekels of silver. They did not think that anything could come out of him being a slave. They did not believe that they could ever see him again. As far as they were concerned, they had defeated God's dreams for Joseph, but they were very wrong. No one can ever derail God's plan for his children. Now let's read the rest of the chapter, 29 to 36. Excuse me. "Then Reuben returned to the pit, and indeed Joseph was not in the pit; and he tore his clothes, and he returned to his brothers and said, 'The lad is no more; and I, where shall I go?'" So they took Joseph's tunic, killed a kate of the goats, and dipped the tunic in the blood. "Then they sent the tunic of many colors, and they brought it to their father and said, 'We have found this; do you know whether it is your son's tunic or not?' And he recognized it and said, 'It is my son's tunic; a wild beast has devoured him.' Without doubt, Joseph is torn to pieces. Then Jacob tore his clothes, put sackcloth on his waist, and mourned, mourned for his son many days; and all his sons and all his daughters arose to comfort him; but he refused to be comforted; and he said, 'For I shall go down into the grave to my son in mourning.' Thus his father wept for him.' Now the Midianites had sold him in Egypt to Potiphar, an officer of Pharaoh and captain of the guard." Excuse me. Apparently, Reuben was not there when his brothers sold Joseph into slavery. When he returned to rescue Joseph from the pit, he discovered that he was no longer there. He tore his cloth in grief. "The boy is gone," he lamented. "What will I do now?" He was the eldest son, and as such, he was responsible for Joseph's life. But it was his compromise and weakness that caused this. Now they needed to lie to their father to cover their sin. They killed a goat and dipped Joseph's tunic in its blood and took it to their father, claiming that they had found it. They asked him to identify it, if it was his daughter's tunic. How wicked! They knew it was Joseph's tunic. They were the ones who killed him. Excuse me. Jacob recognized the tunic and concluded that Joseph had been devoured by a wild beast. He rent his clothes. He mourned deeply for his son for a very long time. He refused to be comforted. Many years before, Jacob had deceived his own father Isaac with Esau's clothes and a slaughtered goat when he stole Esau's blessing. Now his sons were deceiving him with a robe and a slaughtered goat. "Whatever a man soars, that shall he also reap." Galatians 6:7. Galatians 6:7. Meanwhile, Joseph was taken to Egypt and sold to Potiphar, an officer of Pharaoh and captain of the palace guard. Jacob's brothers thought they had got rid of him, and there was no way his dreams would come to pass. Jacob believed that his son was dead and would go mourning for him until he died. Meanwhile, Joseph was a slave in a strange environment in Egypt, away from home and his family. Everything he knew was gone. He did not know what would happen to him next, but he was to cling to God. What all these people didn't know was that God was behind the scenes, working things out in Joseph's life, and the Lord's purpose will always prevail. What terrible situations are you going through now? How have you been hurt or disappointed? Have you been a victim of other people's wickedness? Are you about to give up on your dreams? I have good news for you. God has not forsaken you. He's working things out for your good. People may try to derail God's plan for you. People may try to derail God's plan for you, but they can never succeed. His plan for your life will surely come to pass. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this story of Joseph, which we have started to study tonight. Thank you for what you have taught us in this chapter. Father, we pray that when we experience dire situations, where we have been victims of other people's wickedness, and it seems that all our hopes of realizing our dreams have been dashed, and we wonder where you are, help us to know that you, our faithful God, are very much in our suffering. And even though we cannot see it or feel it, you continue to work out things for our good. And nothing can derail your plan for our lives. We thank you, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we study Genesis, chapter thirty-eight. Good night.